And had to go along the way and had to just, you know, and they tried to get all of us have gotten there. Cause I got there real early to get seen and so.
All right, at six P M Tuesday, December twelfth, we'll call the Mount Pleasant Planning Commission meeting to order. We'll have Ms. Johnston do the invocation and Mr. Irvin do the pledge.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for the opportunity to be here together tonight to make decisions for our city in the planning and what is it built and how it is built and how our city is taken care of. We thank you again for that and we just ask your blessing upon this time. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Hollis tonight, but we do have a quorum for sir here. Number four, approval of prior meeting minutes from November twelfth.
Make the motion we approve those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, number five, Chris, don't think we got any unfinished business from last time?
No unfinished business.
No special reports?
No special.
Okay. Uh, number seven, new business?
New business. Owner applicant Shane Anderson has submitted application to subdivide six point seven eight acres into two parcels consisting of three point four six acres and three point three six acres. The property is located at sixty-nine twenty Hoover Mason Road, tax map one twenty-six parcel zero forty-five point thirteen. The property is zoned light industrial and the applicant and his engineer are in the audience for questions.
And I think I've read that everything's suitable from your department from engineering?
Yes.
So there's no, no concerns for me all?
None came in.
Do y'all need to hear from applicant or would I like to hear from applicant?
As well.
Okay, come on up.
Good evening, Alan O'Leary with W S Engineers and Surveyors. Um, just did the pilot person, uh, Mr. Anderson, and if you have any comments, we'll get them addressed and get our public board.
Yeah, I, I didn't have any questions after they were all answered, so.
I don't either.
Or do I? I make a motion that we, um, yeah, accept this. What is it?
It's a subdivision, sub- subdivision.
Application system subdivision.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number two, Chris, or number B, number B, number B.
Owner applicant Justin Robinette has submitted a site plan for Robinette Trucking to be located adjacent to eleven forty-nine North Main Street. The site consists of sixteen point nine six acres, tax map one twenty-seven parcel fourteen point zero six. Will consist of appro- approximately thirteen hundred square feet foot metal building. The property is owned light industrial.
All right. Before you get the engineering concerns on this first, and then we'll have the applicant come up.
They are in the audience.
Yeah.
So, uh, the site plan was submitted and accepted with a couple of waiver requests and addition to the request to build. And those include a waiver request to comply with the design standards for buildings, the metal pole barn structure, uh, which wouldn't comply with the design review, um, requirements. That's something that you have the ability to waive if you find it necessary. Um, it wasn't clear if there's a specific reason that the applicant wanted to mention for that waiver request. Second one's related to landscaping waiver. Um, both the property is behind a lot of developed sites. Some of those sites include multifamily residential and some others that would require, um, a buffer, landscape buffer between this industrial use and those commercial or residential uses. That's how it's defined in the zoning ordinance. Um, so again, they've made that waiver request, um, to provide landscaping as they've shown. They do provide landscaping around the front building in the parking lot, but it doesn't quite meet the requirements of your zoning ordinance. So maybe they can speak to that as well. Um. There you go. And you can see the, the site is a little bit off road. Um, it's a pretty tall structure, so it will be visible from the road. Um, but we have some lower one-story commercial uses and then the larger, uh, property on the north end is multifamily, so aggregate. Yes. So, um, there's the residential component there. Um, railroad right away runs across the, the top part of the sheet here for the west side as well. So that's not as big of a concern. It has some trees that are probably on the right of, on the rail side of that property line. Um, and then in addition to that, they're proposing quite a bit of gravel storage slash additional parking. So their primary parking lot is paved and concreted around the aprons for the overhead doors. Um, but there is a.
And the drive is too, right? The egress to it, to it.
So it's that, that light is.
Where it's shaded is all.
And, and the shade is gravel.
So this is directional striking, just to kind of keep people moving in the right direction, but this hatch is agitated gravel. And they can probably speak to the, how they want to use that, but it does include equipment storage and additional parking. Uh, that also doesn't comply with your zone ordinance. Um, but maybe they can speak to the need and request there. Other than that.
Uh, we got the light plan back, right? I think I saw, we have not got a light plan back yet.
I haven't seen a light.
I, I thought I saw something that said that they were going to be mounted on, on the building.
Building mounted. There is a total metrics, but it didn't show where that light would cast and I'd email them. Hopefully we've got a, a sample of what that fixture will look like, make sure it has a hood on it, so it'll be downcast light.
And we got the letter from the airport too, so.
We did. Yesterday.
A few things to discuss there. The photometric plan, landscaping, the design of the building and the use of gravel.
All right.
We've got, uh, stormwater drainage calculations that we're lacking. Uh, they will be working on that. So we'll make sure that you're aware that we're in need of those calculations.
And depending on how those are developed and what they say, it may require either some minor, it might not change the site plan at all, but it could cause some changes to park arrangements or locations.
They're still down until they.
All right. Uh, somebody's here who'd like to speak on that from the engineering firm or the owner or.
With, with all these things outstanding, I mean, a lot.
Do you, do you know when you're gonna have the stormwater calculation done? When can we expect that back?
Probably him speaking on that for the most part, but I, I understood it. I guess he wanted to make sure the site plan was approved. He needed to go through all the work of stormwater. If we were to change something on the site plan, because then the stormwater's not really any good, so.
I think you gotta have stormwater first to know if your site plan's gonna be good. I mean, you don't know where the.
We, we've sized the detention. We're about sixty-five to seventy percent on our drainage calculations, but I mean, if you, if you take what Mr. Robinette is proposing as gravel for equipment and track, you know, track machines and whatnot to, to keep preventative maintenance costs down. Uh, if you take that gravel and you change it to true impervious, I mean, that curve number, the curve number goes as high as it can possibly go, you know, to, to ninety-eight. So we've got some leeway in our proposed detention, our water storage feature. So that's where we were kind of, we wanted to get the, the impression of the planning commission, you know, and see what their thoughts were. I mean, at that point, we can, we can roll that report out. I mean, it's likely.
So really this would be more of a pre-planned than a, than a final site plan if you're looking for our feedback, right? I mean, that, we have people that come, come before to ask that.
The way I, I guess that was months ago, the way I understood it was we would come for the site plan approval and then, you know, conditionally approved upon stormwater calculations working out.
Okay, we'll go ahead. Hey, a little bit, one question is, does this answer your, does this answer your light pass question?
I'm sure there's lighting on the lot too, though. This is not gonna be on the lot, right? Your lot, lot's gonna be lit for the trucks apart and everything else. Only lighting you're gonna have is on the building?
The, the storage units besides those, they've got lots and lots of light, but I probably won't, there, there's probably no need to light anything at the back. I didn't have any plans for like.
Not, not your parking areas either, or your?
You know, it's not really lit now and most of our guys, you know, all the equipment, the guys will come in in a truck at night and use his own lights to, to park in parking.
Yeah, it's not always the safest thing to do, but that's okay. That's, that's a.
And just to clarify, do you have C five point zero on, on that?
Electronic.
C five point zero? Yes, sir. That, there's your photometric plan. I was trying to make sure I didn't by mistake send the, the incorrect.
I think we, we require lighting for parking areas, right? Nope.
There's building lighting, but storm's parking lot lighting. I don't know that there.
I don't know that there's a.
For it, but if you do light it, it has.
And then it would potentially interfere with the homes, right?
Yeah.
The light would bother.
It's, doesn't have to, you know, especially if they are selected and the fixtures that they use. Um, it's like photometric. I guess these are just the pictures on the outside of the.
That's, yeah, and that, that's what kind of, I guess confused me with the comment about the lighting plan. I mean, you've got your fixture mounts up there, uh, the locations, they're all wall mounted. Mr. Robinette, uh, that, that was his preference. So we've got four on this, on the, I guess the north, northern to southern walls, and then we've got three in the front of the building. And the, the main thing was we wanted to make sure that the ADA parking there had sufficient lighting. So that's, uh, that's what was done. And of course, the, the lower spots there on the back end, uh, it's pretty weak out there. I can't remember exactly what those photometric numbers came out to be, but I think the max was around eleven foot candles. And the minimum obviously is point two, point one. So that's, I know it's kind of hard to see, um, but they're also here even set plans. Take a look at them.
And I didn't put parking lot lighting on there, but cars, you know, just like you said, there's housing all around the back and I guess we were just trying to be more courteous not to light up everybody's bedroom.
Yeah.
You know, I would rather my guys back into one of my own trucks than, than being inconvenient to our, our neighbors.
And then what about landscaping with those neighbors?
If you got a, I know we lived in, there's part of it of trees and stuff there, but.
I don't have a current over, overall view then.
Cause I would think anywhere where you're, you're at least connected to other property besides the railroad should probably have a buffer zone, just for that reason.
So the, the, I read the zoning text and it talks about the way the properties are zoned. And then it also mentions the way that the properties are used. And so the, I guess the way that I interpreted that, um, was this property is zoned, um, light industrial. And I would think that some of the uses as the zoning text specifies is less intensive. So I guess the commercial lots, there, there's no residential lots that are joint with property.
There's some multifamily apartment.
That, that'd be residential though.
Done commercial highway?
It's their residential.
It's.
Okay.
People live there.
People live there. I mean, if you're worried about your lights, I mean, they're gonna be able to see your place too. So I mean, that's.
And there is a good bit of trees on the backside of that multifamily.
Is it on, on their property or yours?
Right on the property line, best I can tell.
So to, so to bring the building to code, could they just brick the front? Did I read that somewhere in here? That, that would, that would, that something that.
I mean, we could look at those options.
That's under the design. I mean, just because we did things a certain way ten years ago, doesn't mean we oughtn't to try to do them better now. I mean, I.
I mean, I understand. The one, you can't, I mean, it's, it's behind the rail buildings. You know, it's beside a storage unit that's solid metal. It's behind a building already on its metal. And it's across the street from the airport. It's easy to get a lot of new metal buildings that all face the road. You know, it, it does conform to what's around it. Everything around it's basically metal buildings. And if, if you want, just to try to spruce up the front, I'm, I'm wanting to build a really nice looking building. I'm not trying to build an eyesore. You know, if that's something you want us to add some aesthetics to the front of.
I'm just, I'm just asking. I mean, because the building's front of you may not be there always either. So if something, they got redeveloped at some point, then you'd already have it done. Because I know you said in here you were open to, if they tore down the buffer between you and the railroad, you're open to put buffer back there if need be, so. I get, I get the gravel, y'all. I mean.
Yeah.
I, I do, I do.
I don't think, I don't think any of us have a problem with the gravel areas at all. I mean.
Appreciate that.
Man, that makes sense, but.
We, we specified a, a washed aggregate too, to, to keep down on the nuisance for the dust and, and the, the way that it will be constructed, I mean, it'll, it'll basically have a concrete base at that point.
And see, and the buffer's important for, for the dust also, to keep it from migrating to other properties. If you got the trees there and everything else too.
How do we need to satisfy everybody on the buffer between our property and the, the housing property? I know there's trees there. I don't, I don't know how to tell exactly where they are or how big they are. I know there's trees there that provide a buffer, but I don't, I don't know how to show y'all or tell y'all, hey, this is exactly what it looks like.
Yes. Come on disconnect and I'll come back and come again.
That way we're gonna guess and know what it looks like.
Yeah, I looked at it earlier. In the air.
While he's looking at it, it's gonna be a twenty-four hour operation. It's Monday through Friday. What's, uh, do you know? I mean, is it gonna be a little bit of everything?
It's no different than what we're doing now. Most of our business is daylight hours. There's gonna be a truck comes in at midnight on a Saturday night. There's gonna be one that'll leave here and there, but, but no heavy operations after hours. The, the office building won't be open after hours, the weekends.
I was trying to, but I looked at it earlier now. I can't figure out where it is. I don't know why I'm lost. It's just not showing me.
Yeah, people there show us a pretty good picture. If, if it's on my phone, I don't know if that'll.
It'll come here. There it is.
I don't know if y'all, we don't keep talking.
And we do.
The building's proposed in this area somewhere. So all these storage units, you know, block the building and the light, you know, from the building from over here. I think we were looking, so here's our property line, and there's a pretty good row of trees that go all the way down behind these buildings.
Yeah, but that's on, that's on their property if they decide to do something to it, you know?
And if you're just, if, if everybody really wants us to try to do something, you know, we would, it would do it. And we'd have to plant them way back here, don't you?
You, will you be parking back in that area?
We'd probably be dropping empty trailers from time to time.
And that probably makes sense to put something back there.
And I don't mind doing a little bit, I think too. The trailer, I think somebody's pretty, it's a storage unit. They pick what they wanna look at.
They can, but I mean.
Well, what should be back, what, what, what do you, what would be good to be back there?
In terms of?
I mean, how?
The buffer or?
Yeah.
Trees or something.
Well, the ordinance gives some flexibility. It just kind of makes recommendations for the intensity of the buffer based on industrial next to commercial or industrial next to residential. Um, you know, as the designer review committee, the planning commission has the ability to make waivers or to make adjustments to that based on site conditions. So if you found that, you know, the adjacent uses were adequately screened for whatever reason, you could make that, uh, decision based on that. If you felt like more was needed, then the ordinance acts that, you can statement of.
It is, but it's not on their property.
Yeah.
So if the other property owners decide to cut it down, of course, that'd be their choice.
That'd be their problem.
But, but, but the people that live there would have no choice.
Yeah, that's true.
Cause they don't own the place.
And what is that, that Willow, what is that? Willow something?
I mean, I, I think something should be in that area just in case they decide to do something different at some time that impacts their residents that don't have anywhere else to go.
Okay.
Personally, but that's.
I don't think I'd be opposed to that, but maybe don't completely agree with planting stuff in case they cut down their own trees. No, we're not opposed to that if that's something we need to do.
What's hard to see here also, just to point this out, I mean, those are candy trees. Assuming five tall, it's hard to tell what's.
Yeah.
Lower.
Got you. So I mean, it's not like it's underbrush, it's trees.
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be. There may be trees, large trees.
And I guess in the winter when they're bare and then like right now, they're just seeing trees and grass and then they'll have, you know, potentially empty truck beds or whatever back there. They might, they'd be, to me, it would be, as a neighbor, it'd be great to put something up there so that, but then again, where it's gonna be.
Yeah, the later our trees will be, with all these too, so.
Yeah.
Well, and some of the buffers specify a certain number evergreen, a certain number fruit.
Then again, they're looking at storage.
Makes sense that it's all around and.
It is, but it, but it also makes sense that we want to be better. I mean, we, we rezoned this property also. So why not build a building that actually conforms?
Everything's, every property has a light, right?
Yeah.
And we have some uncertainty about what's gonna happen in front in between this site and the highway, but. And the, the goal is to develop the uniform pattern over time, so.
True. Would you, you'd be willing to put some brick on the front?
Yeah, just thinking out loud, you know, a lot of the buildings you see maybe halfway up, they do like a rock or a brick and then, you know, something like that that dresses it up or.
Like a wainscoting.
Does that fit?
Call it.
I don't. That's all I'm saying.
I thought, I've just tried to pick this man's brain.
Done, you got lines, um, say that candy besides rear metal, if you have the front side. Now, this is a really tall building. It's a large structure, so, you know.
So you need to go more than four feet up, you know, like six, eight feet up, possibly.
How tall?
Or I.
Yeah, how tall is the building?
Twenty-six.
It's something, but the part you're gonna see on the front, uh, have to look through the plan.
Fourteen nine.
You could do this a number of ways. You could make it go up to the E's and the transition. Or you could.
We've got the, we've got the.
Look at the rivers, because the front of the building's not gonna be near that tall.
The front of the building's fourteen.
Ah.
Fourteen foot.
You have a picture of the building or?
Yeah.
Clear in there.
Keep going down. Keep going down. There you go.
That's actually the side of the building.
Well, you got the, there's the front.
That's, that's the front of the building. So you don't see a little bit of the roof in the front. But this actually pictures, I don't get it. Whatever I was talking about there. Wainscoting. Can't read that. Can't tell what that says.
The E is fourteen.
Yeah, I believe.
I don't know, I mean, if, if you want, if that's a real snake in front of the closest bird here or something, I don't know. I don't want to be looking.
Sure, sure.
I'm from Mount Pleasant too.
Yeah. Was that halfway thing?
I, I was thinking halfway.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, like, like you could.
The walk-through door height, you know, the window height somewhere.
I'd say architecturally.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So it's like maybe, that's maybe four feet, maybe four feet up.
Thing, my, the traditional way is down anything anywhere from thirty-six to forty-eight. It just kind of depends on where you, you set your elevations for your windows or your, your eye features.
I think the height of the shell is good.
To just swap out that shell material for.
Very common practice in these types of buildings.
I'm following up.
Can I get any other questions?
So your options is the condition or to approve, to approve with conditions or to deny, like I've been contemplating some possible conditions, but.
We just say figure out what type of buffer we're gonna do from the housing.
Well, the, so ordinance specifies some buffers, um, gives you, gives them options for plantings, but tells them the types of plantings to include. So we could work with them as a condition of approval, or if you want to specify something more specific, and. But based on their needs, which are pretty specific and, and how they want to care, it may be important to maybe dust the letdown.
And that's something they could do as a, a condition of approval, come back with, right?
We've talked a lot with Mr. Brooks. The worst, if you don't do the right landscaping, it ends up looking worse than not even doing it. If you put a bunch of stuff out there that doesn't really work and half of it dies, it, you know, it'll look uglier than it would if you just.
That's part of having to maintain it also.
Yeah.
So I mean, if it dies, you got to put some of the night.
Do they need to specify where it goes and if there's some question about the buffer area?
Good point. So the ordinance would require it. For a significant part of the parking lot. So anywhere like.
Anywhere by five residential housing or.
Um, so if your concern is more about the residential properties, the multifamily properties, and less so about the storage units, which wouldn't require a buffer on its own. Or some of the other uses along North Main Street, then probably need to specify that.
This maybe takes several motions to get all this in here. We're not gonna get it all in one.
I've been making good notes.
I would, I would want it along the residential areas. I don't think there's any reason to do it.
Everywhere else, no, I agree. You can, but I, I think it might be easier to break it into parts as Corey always asks us today. But I mean, I, I think we ought to take each, each individual waiver and talk about it as a motion personally.
So make those separate instead of making it a conditional approval of the site plan?
Can you address the waivers first and then you can approve with the conditions?
With the waivers approve or, or disapprove. I mean, if we, if we don't approve the waivers, there's no need to approve the site plan as it is, so.
Okay, well.
The first waiver would relate to the design of the building.
Okay, right. So do I make a motion to waive?
The, the zoning ordinance says that you have to have a preferred material.
Right.
On the building, but you can in industrials. On the building, but you can, in industrial zones, you can waive, you can make metal on the side and the back. Okay, so y'all are actually, you're waiving the preferred material on the side and the back and the top of the front. You're, you're saying that he can build a metal building with this forty-eight inches or thirty-six inch, whatever.
Anywhere between thirty-six and forty-eight, whatever works out best aesthetically, I would think, somewhere between those two.
You're accepting the waiver of to allow the metal building on three sides with forty-eight, thirty-six to forty-eight inches of preferred material, whatever. It's stone, brick.
I made that motion. Yeah, to, to waive the design standards and allow the metal on three sides and the metal up high and the preferred material at the bottom. Thank you.
Thirty-six and forty-eight inches.
That's my, that's my motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
That carries. All right, let's move to the next one of those. Let's do the gravel next.
Yeah, I make a motion that we waive the, um, surface, um, as is in this plan that he can have the gravel.
In the areas, as shown on this plan. Now, the stormwater may change that, but so it's as shown now, we're gonna, yeah, this way.
That's my motion.
That's my second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Get the building and gravel. Trees.
Okay, the landscape, um. I say we waive the, I make a motion that we waive the landscape plan, um, but, but as, as the ordinance shows that he, um, puts some type of buffer for all the residential areas, but he doesn't have to for the non-residential areas. Yeah, please.
Do you want those buffers to follow the zoning ordinance? To enhance the zoning ordinance for areas between industrial and residential uses?
Or they could come up with a plan? Well.
I think you should have to go through design review to make sure it's gonna be adequate personally.
I think it has to be approved by someone. I don't know.
Well, we could, I, I think.
Yeah, please.
We could do it a couple ways. You could, um, grant the waiver to only address buffers along parts of property line to touch. Properties. Um, and in those areas, they would have to provide a buffer as defined in the ordinance. Or you could waive even greater details and, and give them some direction. Which you wanna see. I think the ordinance does a good job of getting your concern about getting that understory for four seasons in the year. But if you're wanting less than that, it's good to have to give these gentlemen some direction on that. So we're not.
I'm, I'm a four seasons person. I mean, if I was living there and I didn't have no other place to live, I wouldn't want a, a truck lot next door to me without some kind of buffer personally.
I'm agreeing with that.
So as following our zoning ordinance.
It's just for the.
Just for the residential parts, yes. Do I need to restate that? Did y'all catch all that? There's my motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So I think we got the photoelectric stuff worked out. We're good on that. So there's no waiver or anything there. So, so, so the last thing we got is conditional approval based on the stormwater.
But that could be included with.
Right, with the main one, right.
So I make a motion that we conditionally approve the site plan contingent on the stormwater drainage plan needing our, his needs.
In the previous three things we did to waivers.
And those three waivers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey, you made me think.
Sorry.
Just for clarification, can, can we go back to the, to the, so if we're, if we're doing it by property use, all those properties are zoned CH, and so I've got this property beside to the east of the storage units. And then the property to the east of that lot is, would be considered residential. And now if we zoom out and we go to the southwest, all of those properties are zoned commercial highway. Are there any residential uses along that corridor that, that would be considered?
Trees over there.
You got trees, trees on your property there, right?
Yes.
I think they're already blocked off, the, the residential right there, right? So it's really just that back.
So it's that, not northeast.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's satisfy, but I'm, I'm gonna say that sometimes those houses are gonna be torn down. It's gonna be commercial again at some point, but.
Not now.
Not, yeah, you don't ever know.
They need to be.
Well, get busy.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. Thank you. Thank you for us getting it worked out. That's it. Unless y'all got some other comments.
Get you guys with your energy report and go from there.
Thank you.
Chris, we'll move on to C three, three or C, whatever we wanna call it.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash PC dash O eight, O six, to approve the two thousand point five regular planning commission meeting dates beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five and ending December the thirty-first, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Make a motion, we accept those dates. We gotta go.
There was only one caveat to that, that one of the dates, November the eleventh, following Veterans Day. So moved it to Wednesday, thinking someone may take a vacation Monday, Tuesday, but it falls on a Wednesday, which they'll have the Barksen Rec meeting at five thirty. So.
We do have one person signed up to talk before y'all run out of here.
Okay.
All right.
So you have the ability to change it or?
We're good.
Make a motion.
We accept those dates.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. We got one person signed up to speak. Mayor White would like to come speak. And Ms. Willie, she didn't sign up, but we'll let her speak.
You can't say a word. You can't say a word.
No, I, I, I just, I'm trying to travel as the year ends and thank everybody. You, you've got a thankless job. And, uh, it's nights like this where you try to make it work because it is great for our community that we're gonna have another nice thirteen thousand square foot building and it's, and we're doing the right thing for residents as well as stormwater, cause we just lost a big deal over stormwater. It appears. And it's, it's for all the right reasons, because it was done right.
Agreed. I mean, you know, we couldn't.
Y'all never saw it. It was done right. So I just wanted to say thank you and that's it.
All right.
I just wanna say thank you. Thank y'all for your service and what you do.
Thank you both. Uh, we got anything else, Chris?
We do not.
All right.
We have comments.
Motion for a vermin. It's some stupid law I've been running out the door. All in favor? Aye. I thought that was on Wednesday night.